Thank you. I would ask, we have a lot of complaints about the microphone, so if you get up to speak, make sure the button is on, turn, speak into the mic, because those at home, it just looks like you're miming. Try to speak close to the mic, so people at home can hear you and we can get it recorded. Appreciate that. We're gonna start off, first off, a blessing over the new council by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, patriarch, Howard Van Valkenburgh. Howard?
Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Father, we come before thee this evening with thankfulness in our hearts for the many blessings thou hast given to us. We're especially thankful for the land of freedom in which we live, and for the men and women who have served and now serve in the military of our great nation to maintain our freedom. We pray for special blessings upon them. We are gathered together this evening under favorable circumstances to have a new mayor for the city of Rock Springs, Sweetwater County, Wyoming. We are thankful, Father, for our past mayor, Carl Dempsey, and we're grateful for him and for those who have served and worked with him through these past several years, and for the many things they have done for our city. We pray for special blessings upon Carl and his family as his term of service now comes to an end. We are aware that with the ending, there is also a beginning, and this will be the beginning of for Timothy Cuomo to serve again as mayor of our great city. We pray that thou would bless him, that he may be able to bear the great responsibility of leadership with wisdom, with integrity, with courage, and with humility. We pray that thou would bless him, that he will work in harmony with other elected city officials and those in leader positions in various departments of the city. We pray that they will work together as a team and accomplish things for us, for our town, that will be for the best good and benefit of all of our citizens. We pray that thou would bless him, that he may know and do what is good and best for our city. We pray that thou would bless him now as he presides over this council meeting and begins this term of service for our city. We pray that thou would bless the citizens of our city, that they too will be prepared to support and help him accomplish, him and the city council accomplish things that need to be done for our city. We humbly ask and pray for these things in the sacred, holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Howard. Appreciate that. First order of business council, election of the council president. Our roll call. Maybe we better make sure everybody's here. First roll call.
Counselor Windor?
Here.
Holter?
Here.
West?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Schlatter?
Here.
Dadi?
Here.
Demus?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Mayor Como? Here. Now with that, I'd accept nomination for the election of the council president. Counselor Schlatter?
Like to nominate. Council? Savage?
We do have a nomination for Counsel Savage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Is there Holter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
No.
Schlatter?
Yes.
Dadi?
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. He knew it was gonna take a lot to keep me in line through this, through this order. I appreciate that. Won't have to get up and move your, where you need to be at that point. Council, next order of business will be the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held January 2nd, 2019.
Your honor, I move to approve the city council meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2019.
Counsel, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The record show no opposed. This is gonna bring us right into the appointment section of our agenda. Item number one, council, the appointments for you. Mr. President and members of the council, I submit the name of Scott Nelson as my appointment to serve as the City of Rock Springs Municipal Court Judge. What's your pleasure?
Counsel, we have the name of George Scott Nelson, the mayor's nominee for municipal judge, City of Rock Springs. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
Seconds.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Schlatter?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Tate?
Here, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Paul Kausic as my appointment to serve as Director of Engineering, Operations, and Public Services.
Counsel, we have the name of Paul Kausic, mayor's nominee for Director of Engineering, Operations, and Public Services. We have a motion to approve.
Still moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Windor?
Yes.
Yes.
West? Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Schlatter?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Tate?
Here, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Richard Beckwith as my appointment to serve as city attorney.
Counsel, we have the name of Richard Beckwith, the mayor's nominee for city attorney. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
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 Tate?
Yes.
Holter?
No.
Mayor, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of Duane Pacheco as my appointment to serve as police chief.
Counsel, we have Duane Pacheco, the mayor's nominee for city police chief of Rock Springs. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of David Lansing as my appointment to serve as Director of Parks and Recreation.
Counsel, we have David Lansing, the mayor's nominee for Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Rock Springs. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
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 Tate?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and congratulations and welcome aboard department heads. With that, if we could, we will go through the swearing-in, beginning now, could, I will swear in the honorable Judge Nelson, at which time he will then swear in the other department.
Thank you for that. Council, next order of business we have before you under appointments, I submit the name of Kevin Hardisty to fill an unexpired term on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Counsel, Kevin Hardisty has stepped up to fill the unexpired term of Keaton West on P and Z. We have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
Roll call, please.
Sir, Wendor?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savitch?
Yes.
Blata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Dimas?
Tate?
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, I submit to you the name of Bonnie Cannon to serve first term on the Rock Springs Historical Museum.
Counsel, Bonnie Cannon has stepped up to serve a first term on the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sir, Demas?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Blata?
Yes.
Savitch?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Dorf?
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Next item of business, council standing committees. I'm going to go through these standing committees. We'll get approval on all of them if we could. Some of these committees need to get moving as soon as possible. So if I could, Mr. President, I am going to submit Budget Finance. That's going to be yourself, council president, Mr. David Tate. Union Negotiations will be the full council. Parks and Recreation, Tim Savage, chairman. Keaton West, Glenise Wendorff. And if these are approved, I will get you copies of every one of these so we don't lose you in this, okay? But we do need to get the commitment on them. Garbage Committee, guess who? Glenise Wendorff, chairman. Billy Shalata, Jeanie Demas. Visual Improvements in Art, Jeanie Demas, chairwoman. Keaton West, Rob Zadi. Public Safety Committee, Tim Savage, chair. David Halter, David Tate. Water and Sewer Committee, Keaton West, chair. Glenise Wendorff, Tim Savage. Snow and Weed Control, Rob Zadi, chair. Glenise Wendorff, Jeanie Demas. Municipal Court Committee, Billy Shalata, chairman. Rob Zadi, Keaton West. Cemetery, Billy Shalata, chair. David Halter, Jeanie Demas. Christmas Committee and Parade, Glenise Wendorff. One man banned there. Organizational and Policy Review, Keaton West, chair. Rob Zadi, Tim Savage. City Buildings, Rob Zadi, chair. Keaton West, Jeanie Demas. Legislative and Lobbying Committee, this is one that's going to have to start immediately, Tim Savage, chair. David Halter, Billy Shalata. This is going to incorporate some of the city employees and you'll receive a letter with that as we get moving forward. Also with that, council liaisons. Sick Leave Committee, David Tate. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Tim Savage, Keaton West, Glenise Wendorff. Ambulance Board, David Halter. Regional Airport Board, Glenise Wendorff. Rock Springs Chamber, SCDC, this is a new one that we have been requested to have a liaison, Jeanie Demas. Historic Preservation Committee, David Tate. Joint Powers Fiber Optics, David Halter, as our council rep. Insurance Committee, Rob Zadi. Animal Committee, Tim Savage. Museum Board, David Tate. URA Main Street, Glenise Wendorff. Broadway Theater, Rob Zadi. Keaton West, Billy Shalata. Oh, I'm sorry, Board of Health, Billy Shalata. Specific Purpose Tax Board Member, Keaton West. And one board liaison that was requested due to our Tree City USA was the Beautification/Tree Board Committee. Keaton West will be our liaison. That will consist of Janice Meredith and Mark Lyon, and they'll get going on that. Is that correct, Mr. Lyon?
Good, I don't have to bring it up now.
Okay. With that, and I don't know if you want to have any questions or like, but that is the list. If we could get approval on those so they could begin their work, I don't know if you need to repeat them all.
Counsel, we have before you the mayor's council standing committee appointments. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sir, Halter?
Yes.
West?
Can I have a quick question? On the Specific Purpose Tax, my father is the chairman, just want to ensure there's no conflict of interest with that. Or? C?
Savitch?
Yes.
Blata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your bid assignments.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. President, members of the council. With that, we're going to move into our bid opening section of our agenda at this time. And I understand we have no bids for the police vehicles for the city of Rock Springs. So item number two, the water reclamation facility into your tank coating project. We have one bid, Mandros painting. Looks like the total bid, Mandros, $248,634. Two forty-eight, six thirty-four. Counsel, I would, will submit this to staff for review and for recommendation. Before we get into presentations and proclamations, I just want to take just five minutes and give Kristen a thank you. I think I've run her ragged in Matt's department, but what a, what a great asset to the city you are. I'm sorry, I apologize. I brought donuts today. I don't know if that made up for it, but I just appreciate the staff. We've had a lot of changes in the last couple of weeks in Matt, your staff, each one of your departments. I appreciate the help and Kristen mostly. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Let's give her a round of applause, this girl. Thank you so much. And next, presentations and proclamations, we have Susan Von Erns, Rock Springs Box Art Committee. Susan, if you want to, or go up and make sure that button's on if you went on the mic, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Susan's turning over it to me, I'm Darcy Punches. I'm also a member of the Springs Box Art Committee. And basically, we'd like to thank you for letting us. We are a sort of homegrown, local organization that would like to see some vinyl wrapping done in the city of Rock Springs, some power boxes, some seen things like. And we've been in contact with. And essentially, we're here just for your blessing and to give you some, just like a heads up that we'd love to do this. We are not here for any funding. We have contacted Ron Wild from Rocky Mountain Power and Darren Kaufman from YDOT and have received positive feedback and talked to them about all of the sort of technical things that would need to go with this for safety issues, reasons, et cetera. We have also spoke with Chad Banks from the URA Main Street and he would be, he's willing to work with us, excited, thinks there may be some grant opportunities for the downtown area, very supportive of our efforts. We've located three boxes in town so far, actually a fourth is on the Western Wyoming Community College campus. And because it's on the Western Wyoming Community College campus, it's kind of theirs, it's not really one that we would, we consider part of the city. However, we've discussed having like a theme, maybe a nationalities theme related to Rock Springs, and our goal would be to have four of these wrapped. So that's our big goal. The idea is in the very beginning stages, we have a committee of Chris Chewing, Bernadine Kraft, Brianna Jackman, Peg Larson, myself, and Suzie, and we just kind of all got together and thought it'd be good. We do need your support in terms of, you know, your blessing, kind of a citywide support. The project would give Rock Springs some nice branding material in terms of tourism, relocation, and basically just your support. Necessary. We will create a step-by-step procedure that will be agreed upon by the city of Rock Springs, which of these boxes, the owner of the box. This will include approval of each art piece before installation and will follow city And we've been in contact with the city of Missoula and Jackson Hole and really just found sort of what's been successful in both of those places to have this done. And Suzie's going to talk a little packet we handed out, and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
So each of you have a packet. The first, well, the first four pieces are pictures from Rocky Mountain Power that other cities have done with their boxes. This is kind of what we envision Rock Springs look like instead of the green or gray for boxes to have them with art. The next couple pieces are, it's basically the outline that we got from Missoula, Montana. It explains their project, where they're located in their town, the artist's award, materials, guidelines, graphics. So we will write our own process, following these guidelines, whatever the city requires, and that's why we need to help coordinate. The other, the last couple pieces back is just the killing box artists release. So basically, get their approval, put their artwork on the box. We're not sure what that is, we're still in the stages.
Where, yeah, where does that funding, I mean, this one says a thousand dollars, but who pays that?
We are hoping to get funding from grants, from states, Wyoming Art Council, URA Main Street, possibly business. If like a box is kind of their business.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Kausic?
Counselor Zadi, curious to mention four locations on the.
One is in front of Premier Boone and Joint, they're all on College Drive. The other one is in front of the Fire Space College by Domino's, and then in Arthur.
Mr. Kausic, do you see any problems?
I, I. Didn't want to. They were.
That's what we thought we were talking about, but now, now they're mostly Rocky Mountain certain.
But now we don't. We wrap that traffic opa on College Drive.
Yeah, yeah.
So no one hears it.
It's interesting how many different people own boxes and all of the regulations we've
They're a target.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, Counselor Shalata?
I was just, tell them.
Depends on the material, between five to seven.
Three, two, something's there.
Can work with you on that.
Not quite that far, but.
There's the funding.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we do know, especially Ron, we talked to, they, they would.
Yeah, I would think the ultraviolet rays and the ninety mile an hour wind that we sometimes get here might decrease the lifespan, but the biggest thing is we wouldn't want them looking shabby and, and I think it's a great idea.
One thing is you put a together process, placement plan, system, thousands, thousands of dollars a week. Our first, would like to, two, not putting bright shiny, which is.
So I would, oh, Councilwoman Wendorff?
I have a quick question. Is this pretty much the same material that goes on the cars, wraps, or is it a different kind of a wrap? Oh, okay.
I would believe that the council supports the idea if we could just task you in bringing back a plan, especially a maintenance plan on the what-ifs down the road, I believe we'd be happy to support you once we got a chance to take a look at that. Get our blessing. This is going to bring us to the petition section of our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience today that would wish to address the council on any issue whatsoever? This is your time to do so.
I know, to come up here. I'm Sydney Shannon and I'm the student body. School, and I just came to share information about our I Bleed Orange Drive. It's an annual blood drive that we do in competition with Green River High School every year and right now, five, five break.
That's good. Is that button still on?
I believe so.
We want everybody at home to hear this so we can generate some volume for you.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
So, we're inviting the city council members and department heads and just members of Rock Springs to come donate so we can get the most donations possible this year. It's on Monday, January twenty-eighth, from noon to six PM at Funding Freight Station. And if those times didn't work for you guys, you could also come to our school drive, which is on January thirtieth, from nine AM to three PM. The student council just thought it would be really cool to tell you guys about it because we think theaters of our town are doing something, then others are a lot more likely to follow in their footsteps. So I have a flyer here that if it's okay, I'll leave table for you guys to pick up.
You can just drop it off to Counselor Wendorff on the way and she'll pass it through.
Perfect. So walk-ins are of course accepted, however, if you want to get in the quickest, could make an appointment. On here, it says you can get online or you could contact me to make those appointments. So we're just hoping that everyone will donate and get their I Bleed Orange t-shirts and then wear them to our game on Thursday, January thirty-first, and support the Tigers so we can get a win this year. So, thank you.
Your Honor, I have a, so, Green River has the same number of slots, appointments that Rock Springs has, but how does one, how does one, how would the points tally?
Well, last year, we actually had more donors sign up for the blood drive, however, more were turned away, low iron or things like that. And they also had a lot of people who donated doubles in Green River, so they had the same donors, but actually got more blood at the end of the day. And sometimes we don't fill up all the slots, or they don't fill up all the slots, but right now we have about half the slots filled, so we're hoping to get those other slots filled in the next two weeks.
Be a competition.
Yeah.
Squeeze as much as you can.
Those who win are laying out in the curbside unconscious. Yeah.
So, like, two weeks ago, I tried to sign up for the double, because I always liked to do the double. There wasn't any available, it was only the whole blood.
Yeah, on, online, everything says whole blood, however, when you get in, you can just tell them, I want doubles.
So, so if a person goes to, so if a person goes to Green River and takes one of their slots, but says they want to bleed orange?
Yes, you can, you can go there and say.
Is that right? Is that how that works? You get to say?
We have a lot of people actually come here and tell us they bleed green.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
See, that's, that's how, that's how they're doing. Okay, all right, all right.
Good to know, good to know. Well, everybody bleed orange. We're going to have to win this year, but I appreciate your time and we'll, we'll do our best to get, get donors out there and let's win this thing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm already signed up. I'll be doing number fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
So I challenge you guys, roll up your sleeves.
Is, is there anyone else here tonight wishing to address the council on any issue whatsoever? This is your time. Hearing none? Oh, oh, you got up the wrong time. Petitions, it's closed at this time. We're going to move on to the officer and staff reports. Counsel, number one, the health insurance fund recap, December two thousand eighteen. Two, the financial support summer, or report summary, December two thousand eighteen. And three, the animal control monthly report for December two thousand eighteen. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Tate? We do have a motion to approve the officers and staff reports in place on file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Thank you. Council Committee and Board Reports, number one, the Police Commission Report for two thousand eighteen. Two, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorff?
I move to approve the Committee and Board Reports in place on file.
We do have a motion to approve the Council Committee and Board Reports. Do I have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. We will place those on file. Item number two, the Bills and Claims. Item number one, the Bills and Claims for January fifteenth.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorff?
I move to approve the Bills and Claims for January fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Whoops, I'm sorry, we do have a motion to approve the Bills and Claims for January fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Your Honor, I'd like to abstain.
Let the record show. All in favor, say aye. Number two?
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for January seventh, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for January seventh, two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure? Or I do any?
I'll say.
We need a, we need a second. We have a second, Councilwoman Halter? We've got a second by Councilman, yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This is going to bring us to our new business portion of our agenda. Item number one, the request from Public Services Department for permission to fill a vacant city plan or position. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I move to approve this request.
We have a motion to approve this request from Public Services Department. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number two, request from the Engineering and Operations Department for permission to fill a vacant street maintenance worker one position for the Streets Division. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve the request for Streets Division, Main Maintenance Worker One.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number three, the request from the Parks and Rec Department for permission to fill a vacant assistant golf professional position for the White Mountain Golf Course. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorff?
I move to approve that request from Parks and Rec.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number four, request from the Engineering and Operations for permission to bid a truck with a plow for the Cemetery Division. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Tate? Councilman Tate? We have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number five, the requ, request from the Parks and Rec for permission to bid a renovation proj, project for the tennis and basketball courts at Palisades Park. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
I have a question. Is, is that also going to have football, Mr. Lansing? Your Honor, Councilman Savage? Ten, ten, basketball.
All right. Well, for that reason, I will move to approve request for pickleball courts at Palisades Park.
We do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number six, the requ, request from the Parks and Rec Department for permission to bid a large area mower for the White Mountain Golf Course. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West? We have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second? Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Item number seven, the request from the Ponderosa Bar for a liquor catering permit for the Red Tie Gala on February second, two thousand nineteen, from five P M. to eleven P M. at the Sweetwater Events Complex, already approved by the Green River City Council at their December eighteenth meeting. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Windorf?
I move to approve that request.
We have a motion to approve that request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And item number eight, request from Blackrock Incorporated for a liquor catering, catering permit for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet on February ninth, two thousand nineteen, from five P M. to eleven P M. at the Sweetwater Events Complex. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate? We have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Or all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is going to bring us to our resolution section of our agenda. And, um, item number one is, uh, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero three.
Resolution accepting and approving a legal services agreement from Oaks Law Firm, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurney, the city clerk, to execute said agreement on behalf of.
Councilman, due to further, um, investigation and information, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Zadi? We do have a motion to table Resolution two thousand nineteen zero three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Zada?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Um, item number two, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four.
A resolution accepting and approving the further flexible benefit plan document, applicable benefit summary, further in the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, authorizing Timothy A. Como, mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Matthew L. McBurney, city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, execute said planned document. City of Rock Springs.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman?
I move to.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zada?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Yes. It's going to bring us to our ordinances. We have, uh, two thousand nineteen dash zero one, second reading.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs from I-two heavy industrial to I-one light industrial for a parcel totaling one point three eight three acres, located as hereby described, Lot Eight, Section Twenty, survey township, nineteen north range, one oh five west, of the sixth principal meridian in the city of Rock Springs, county of Sweetwater, state of Wyoming.
Second item under ordinances, two thousand nineteen dash zero two, first reading.
An ordinance amending Article seven one, entitled Building Code of the ordinances of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counsel, I'd just like to, um, say a few comments before we, uh, turn into an executive session to discuss real estate, um, in the form of, uh, State of the City Address. It's an honor to represent Rock Springs again as your mayor. I look forward to the challenges ahead. I commend our employees and elected officials who dedicate themselves to improve the quality of life here for our citizens. I want to thank my wife and family for once again supporting me in this endeavor and, uh, hopefully not committing me for a mental evaluation, but I look forward to it. Uh, as you all know, funding will continue to be an issue. And we all will need to take a more aggressive approach to secure additional funding through the legislative process and available grants. Overall, the state's econ, economic conditions continue to moderately improve. Statewide unemployment hovers around three point nine percent, which is relatively low, and most industries are growing. Although we are somewhat rebounding from the downturn, the latest Craig estimates, if you haven't seen, are down by about sixty-seven point three million dollars in regards to the state's general fund and budget reserve account due to a sharp decline in oil prices that started in October and, uh, continued through the present time. Oil hit a high of about eighty dollars a barrel in October and hovers around fifty-three dollars a barrel as we speak, which means less revenue coming into the state. This affects all the sectors that support the industry and becomes a snowball effect once oil hits fifty dollars a barrel as activity in the industry is, uh, reduced. Sales and use tax collections continue to grow in, in twenty of the state counties, um, uh, five months into the fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, with Niobrara, Sublet, and you know who, Sweetwater, uh, counties being the exceptions that incurred losses. This being said, there's a lot of us battling for available funding from the state and will have to be creative and aggressive in participating in the process in order to achieve our goals here in Rock Springs. In regards to the state of the city of Rock Springs, when comparing sales tax revenues received in January of two thousand eighteen to January of two thousand nineteen, there was a decrease of approximately three percent. Year to date, through January, we're roughly about three percent ahead of last year and about twenty-nine percent of the budget year to date. We've made some changes in regards to how city departments function, which will save costs, which will be utilized to improve services to the community. We will continue to be accountable for taxpayers' dollars and transparent in all that we do. Our goal as elected officials is to constantly strive to improve the quality of life for our citizens here in Rock Springs and to do our best to find funding mechanisms beyond just our general fund. I look forward to the challenges ahead and to work side by side with the city council in a proactive manner to improve our city, remedy the problems that we have, and create a community which we all can be proud of. And I thank you all for your support. And this time, we're going to, um, adjourn into an executive session, session at this time to discuss real estate if we could. Oh, we do need a motion. But, Councilman? We do have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. I think we need a roll call on executive session. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi? Teemus?
Tate? Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Zada?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes.